We're gonna call our work session.
Into order.
There he is. All right, counsel.
Sorry, I'm late?
No worries, I was trying to wait on you.
Jay coming?
All right. Monday, February 19th, 2024, work session now called to order. First on the agenda is discussion of a false alarm ordinance by Fire Chief Chris Ellis, Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Chief.
Chief.
I was asked by the mayor to put together a fire alarm ordinance. Fire alarms are one of the... One of many calls we go on, but they are one of the majority calls. And we keep going back to several addresses just throughout the year. And so I put... I looked at what Daphne had on the books, what Spanish Fort had on the books, and I put one together that's fit the Fairhope... Fit the city of Fairhope and the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department. Do you have any questions on it, or would you like me to read it? You don't have a copy? Uh-oh.
I have a question.
Okay.
Where is it?
That's what I said. I'm like, I don't think I have copies.
Uh-oh. Sure. And I'm sorry, I was under the impression you all had that. So it says, "In the event of the fire... Of a fire alarm activation..." "In the event of fire... An activation of fire alarm system is deemed by the fire official to be a false alarm, the owner of this... The owner shall be asserted violation notice by an officer member of the fire department indicating that the activation was a false fire alarm. No fine should be assessed for the first fire alarm responded to by the fire department within a one-year period. Thereafter, the owner shall pay a fine for false alarms responded to by the fire department at the same premises within a one-year period, except when the fire alarm is responsible..." Except when the fir... First fire alarm... Or, excuse me, when the fire alarm business is responsible for the fire alarm. The fire alarm should... Or the business shall be assessed a fine of $500 if a fire official determines that a false fire alarm was determined directly caused by an onsite employee or representative of the fire alarm business. In this event, no fire alarm shall be counted against the owner." So that means if the... For some reason, the alarm was set off by a technician working on the system, that it would go towards the business, not the owner of the... It would go towards the monitoring business, not the business that was being... We were being called to. False fire alarms activated by any components connected to the fire alarm system shall be included in computing the total number of false alarms for the purpose of this subsection. The activation of a fire alarm system will not be considered a false alarm if the alarm is activated due to malicious causes beyond the control of the owner. So if somebody were to go in there and pull a fire alarm, a pull station, or set something off, that's what that's referring to. The file... The following fines should be assessed for false fire alarms. Nothing for the first fire alarm, $50 for the second within a one-year period, $100 for the third, $200 for the fourth, and $500 for the fifth and anything else above. Just to give you an idea of the number of fire alarms Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department ran in 2023, we ran 244 fire alarms. 125 of those were commercial, 119 of those were residential.
Chief, can I back?
Yes, sir.
Did you mean to say that it was 244 false alarms?
To... Total. For the year. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like I said, 125 of those were commercial properties, 119 residential. Of the commercials, we went to Old Battles Place Apartments 19 times. Fairhope High three times, Fairhope Middle once, West four times, East three times, Newton School once. Looking Good Donuts, which controls... Which is on Greeno, they all... They have the fire alarm for Rotolos and also the other, like CVSs. We went there five times. Flack Creek Apartments, and that's all the buildings. We went there 13 times between all... Between all the buildings on that property. Once to Bay Eyes, went once to PD, three... Four times here to the Civic Center and City Hall.
We won't charge ourselves.
The Hampton Inn, we went nine times. 12 times to the Holiday Inn Express. The New Publix, just in December, the New Publix on 104 was six times. And then to the... The complex on 104... The shops at Publix on 104, we went four times also, and that was just in December. For the various buildings at Homestead, we went there four times. Thomas Hospital eight. The storage units at Eckeroo Shopping Center, we went there four times. Two of those times are during the McDonald's fire, though, and that was due to local water pressure. Pig... The Pigly Wiggly, we went five times. Six times to Fairhope Inn. And just Lakewood Golf... Or Lakewood Clubhouse had seven. And the other ones, there's a few others with just one or two.
Yeah.
Can you tell me, when you go most often to these calls? I mean, are they having fire alarm issues? Are they... Is people pulling the fire alarms?
So it's set off due to dust or construction a lot of times, and just sometimes they're just faulty detectors.
So this is not a case of people pulling the...
No, it's... Most of these are not a case of malicious intent. It's just...
Improper maintenance, or just no fault of their own, or...
I don't know about improper maintenance. A lot of times, we can clear the... Clear the detectors by pulling them down and actually blowing a little bit of air into them, and then putting them back up and resetting them. So it might be something that... And we've told... We've told the different entities that we've responded to, hey, you know, this is... This is something y'all should be doing, is cleaning... Is cleaning these out. But the Publix ones were just... They were trying to get everything right. We've been back a couple of times this year as they tried to work out the bugs out of their... That system, so...
So chief, we have created an ordinance already earlier in 2023, gentlemen, that was similar to this, but it was for the chief of police. So I thought we were piggybacking all of that into that ordinance with fire and false calls with the police department. But this is the exact same ordinance, I believe, except it's dealing with the fire department, if I remember correctly. It's pretty similar with false calls.
I'm sure it's... I'm sure it's similar.
It's really, really similar. My... A couple of things that I just wanted to remind everybody of that, but a couple of things, the schools. I don't know if we can tax the schools, because some of those will probably practice... You know, we have to remember, they practice using the fire for...
Those ones are... Those are ones we've been to after hours. There's been one or two that we were called to during the day, but there was... The rest of them were after hours.
Yeah, I still wouldn't want to tax the schools.
Sure.
Just... I mean, I... Well, I mean...
It costs us resources.
Yeah, you know. But anyway, that's my only... That's my opinion, you know, but... So when we taxing people for dust and things like that, that you're saying there's no ill intent, but we're putting this ordinance, you know, what can we do to mitigate? You know, I believe in us making money, but when, you know, you have things that are triggering these alarms because of technicalities, I don't know if I'm a business owner, I don't know if I want to be charged on my third time, you know, 500 bucks, you know, and third time and after every time that thing goes on because of a dust mite. What are some solutions that we can kind of...
It's only the fifth time is 500.
It's a...
Okay.
Fifth time within a month?
No, fifth time within a year.
Within a year. So one is zero.
One is zero. The first time it goes off is zero, and...
It's not being one, it's per year.
Correct.
Per year. Okay, so the first time is zero, the second time?
$50.
It's just $50. Second, third time?
Would be a hun... Would be 100.
Okay, and then fourth and fifth?
Right.
Yeah, got it.
And if they had...
It's costing us one call. Could we pay?
Yeah, I mean, it would...
It honestly just depends. If you've got a command officer... So you're looking at... If you get a command officer and two trucks, so four people, there's a... What do we have, 100? And the old numbers would have been 248, 48. And then...
So chief, while you calculate that, how much time are you spending out there once you go on a call?
A lot of it depends on if they've got a Knox box there and if we can make access to them. If there's a Knox box there and we can make access, we're there 20 minutes while we're making sure things are... Things are okay. If they're... If we're waiting on a key holder, we could be there an hour or more, depending on...
It's uncommon to have this. We had something...
Yeah, we'll do it. I'm just...
Or somewhere, just...
Yep.
Because you don't want them being distracted by a false alarm.
Right.
If somebody else has a need. I did have a question or two, chief, just some cleanup and the wording in here.
108.
108 for four.
Yeah, that's two trucks and a command officer.
You have the ordinance?
Two trucks of four.
I've got it on... I've got the proposed ordinance here, but I would say like the third paragraph kind of is worded a little funny.
Yeah.
And a few other items where maybe...
We need to... After reading it again, I think we need to clarify it. Clarify it a little better.
And then, you know, just little nitpicky things with like one where it says, okay, it's one thing, you know, the activation of a fire alarm system will not be considered a false alarm if it is activated due to malicious causes beyond... I agree with not assessing them a fine, but I think it's definitely... It's still a false fire alarm if it's, I don't know, just a little wording and things like that that need to be cleaned up.
Let's say if it's... They're not going to be fined if it's malicious, but they have a problem with, you know, a hotel and they, you know, kids pull the fire alarm 25 times a month. I mean, you gonna tell me they don't need to be punished for that and say, hey, you know, you need to get control of your guests? I'm not so sure that that's, you know, I think that's almost a little too lax. There needs to be some middle ground there, in my opinion. And then the number that you just quoted to Marcus, what that cost was, that was labor only, right?
That's just manpower. That's not... That's not the cost of fuel.
That's not wear and tear on your vehicle. That's not mileage. That's not risk. And another thing that you can't really put a number on is risk.
Yes.
Every time you get that emergency vehicle on the road, there's a risk. There's a risk of a wreck. There's a risk that there's going to be a fire. There's risk involved, and there's a cost of risk. I can't calculate that, but it's a... It's a real thing that we don't have a number on, so it's, you know, I think that these fines are... While I don't disagree with them, it's given them... Given that owner, that alarm, pretty much the benefit of the doubt. I think that it's a, you know, it's not too heavy on them, but it hopefully will be a deterrent.
And I would agree on the malicious... I mean, I think that needs to be treated the same as any of the others, because if it's a... If it's a problem with the guests, put the onus on the... On the property owner to get control of... Get control of it.
I don't have a problem with any of it, to be honest. It's just I wanted to make sure that we got the numbers right. I think this is pretty common across municipalities when I did my research the first time, so it's something that we don't have, that we need to implement, you know? One other question, though, chief. Is there any way when we get these suspicious calls, do y'all have any idea to delineate? Yep.
No, there's no...
So you couldn't send a spy? Instead of sending a whole troop? Send a spy vehicle?
Well, that's what...
I mean, a reconnaissance type deal.
That's what the command vehicle's for.
You know, so...
Hopefully...
If it's Joe House and they're sending somebody to move that...
But you've got to treat each one like it's a real deal.
Right behind them.
Because you never know.
Hey, it's a question.
You've got to treat everyone like a real deal.
I ask third grade questions, man. I'm not scared.
No, no. That's a great question, because it's been asked. Other people have wondered that. There's no way... Unfortunately, there's no way to figure that out unless we just go up there and check.
All right, kids, your next invention. Chief, when they... When somebody's testing their fire alarm system, they have a number. Do they call the fire department and say, you know, hey, we're testing the system, put you...
So they can... They can either call...
Test mode or something.
They call their alarm company?
Yes, sir.
Like the schools do this, but anytime they're supposed... Anytime they're working on the system, alarm system, they're supposed to call their alarm company, place it in test for XYZ amount of time.
Who takes... Who fills those calls at the fire department? Does that go to...
We don't. It goes to their alarm. So it goes to Hunter, it goes to whoever they're subscribed to for the alarm system.
Their third party?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's a third party.
Okay, so the alarm would go through the third party before it got to you?
Yes, it goes to the alarm monitoring system, and then unfortunately, sometimes technicians forget, and then we get a call to go to the old folks' arm or the school or something like that, anyway.
So I don't have the... For whatever reason, I don't think I have it, but I remember in the one that we wrote for the police department, it had a fine for the third parties as well. Is that embedded in this one, guys?
Somewhat. I think I need to adjust it.
That needs to be, because there are times... There are times when that third party is at fault, and we need to make sure that we're not punishing the owner when they're the...
And I need to... I need... Reading this again, I need to define that, but...
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming these aren't silent alarms, though?
No, these are fire alarms.
So they go off?
Yes.
So technician's working on it, goes off. He doesn't bother to call the fire department and say, hey, this is a false alarm I'm working on.
He should be calling... He should honestly be calling his alarm company and whoever he's working for and say, hey, cancel them. It's just me. But they don't... They don't until they're there.
A fine is absolutely warranted. And Jack, I agree with you across the board.
You often do.
I do this time for sure.
Oh, I have it here. I see it now. I have it. So while we're talking about it, do we need to... I mean, what... Where do we feel about that maliciousness, and is there a... Is there a middle ground? How do you... How do you write that to be somewhat, you know?
Jimmy, where were you reading?
Was I reading?
Do you strike that out completely, or do you have some middle ground? I don't know what middle ground looks like there.
I think probably the city park could get some warning. I think that's going to have to get a power line, get some warning, maybe come in with these fires.
Which paragraph, guys, are you guys reading as far as the malicious?
It's right at the top at this point.
On the very first page?
Yes.
Third paragraph needed some work, but I don't even know if that's what y'all are talking about.
It would be the third paragraph, and that's...
Got two conflicting statements.
We can drag it and bring it back to us, what we... What it was to me.
I was going to ask, I don't know if the chief's in the lobby and she can hear me. Chief, if you can hear me out there, I always wanted to know what, you know, the effect of the ordinance that we passed for the police department, if that's reduced the number of false alarms and making a difference. Do you know?
I do not. And that was passed a while... I mean, it was passed probably in 2017, maybe?
I remember that. That's why when I heard this, I kind of thought we'd already done it.
Yeah, it's like, it was...
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
I thought it was just recently.
Chief and I have talked about it needs to be renewed.
Yeah. Chief, I thought we did one recently with this. Chief, the question is, when we passed the false alarm ordinance for the police department, did we see a reduction in false alarms? Was it helpful?
It was. It was a huge reduction. Because people... Because what they'll do is, I mean, as the more alarms you have, I mean, I think it's their responsibility to find out what the problem is. So they'll go back and call someone out to do, you know, to do the maintenance and make sure... Make sure there's not a problem with it.
Seems like you put a little more urgency on it, doesn't it? I do have another question for you, Chief Ellis. The... You made a comment at the very beginning, I believe, that the... A fireman would issue a... Maybe a written warning, or who would be issuing the... Who's going to issue a citation if they're in violation, whether that be a warning or an actual...
That's the part we have to figure out. And that was where we were... I know Assistant Chief Thomas and I were wondering about that. Would it be one of the chiefs, or would it be somebody from the city?
Probably someone.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, somebody that knows that everybody would have the authority to do that, right?
That was the biggest question. That was one of the biggest questions we both had, so... Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for me?
No, sir, chief, you don't have anything else for us.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, guys. Next on the agenda is committee updates. Airport Authority meeting was moved from the 20th to the... 28. 27th, I believe. And the rec board meeting is... Wednesday. Wednesday night? Yes, sir. And I haven't had any other committee meetings since last report.
Library board meeting right now, so no report on that.
Would you like to be excused to go to that, Jimmy?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
Personnel board met. We are finalizing the new rules of employment, and we'll be getting those soon to look at. I think it's going to be real good to clean up a lot of the stuff that we had in it and add in a few new things.
Yeah, I talked to Hannah about that. She seems excited about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. I don't have anything as far as committee updates.
Oh!
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to mention this.
Yes, sir.
Our safety program here in Fairhope is working so well that we've had zero accidents up to today, except one, that cost no money. So as of last meeting, we hadn't... We hadn't cost the city any money in work-related accidents.
You know, I wish we were smarter.
Safety program seems to be working pretty well.
Yeah.
A little congrats to Donnie.
Only makes sense, right? That's awesome. Thank you, Donnie. Mayor, everybody involved in hiring that young man. All right, moving right along, guys.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening. So I've got quite a few on there. I'd like to start with number seven, award bid to Taylor Corporation for Water Treatment Plant Number One improvements. This was a formal bid, so it was advertised, and they came in the cheapest. It was close, but they came in the cheapest.
So we're going to install two new finished water pumps and a variable flow device, new finished water pump head, pin, piping. Is that it?
No, this is number seven. This is... This is just for the contractor to do the work.
Just for the contractor?
Correct.
Okay.
But that will lead into number eight and nine.
Wait a minute now. So it looks like on seven, it was what, Corey? It says installation of two new finished water pumps. Yeah, so it says, subject matter is...
Do I have a different one?
Install of new well pump and associated piping and miscellaneous yard piping, installation of two finished water pumps for variable flow devices, new finished water pump head piping, installation of new well pump and associated piping, and then the miscellaneous yard piping. That's what I have. And let's see a little background information here.
No. So no... So my number seven, this is what I printed off today. This is for Taylor Corporation for 1.4...
Yes, sir. That's what this is. That's what this is, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, so...
Do you not have it?
I've got it right here.
So...
Number eight is for Mora Water Technologies?
Correct. Correct.
Right. So number eight and nine, those are going to have to be rebid?
Yeah, we... Yeah, we know. We took them off there, Jack.
Okay.
Yeah, but... So let's go back to seven.
Correct.
Darrell, so what are we doing with seven?
That's the contractor that's going to do the work. They're going to install the piping, install the motors, install the pumps, the frequency drives. We're hoping to start that in October.
So seven was only labor, didn't include the...
That is correct.
The pumps and the drives?
Seven was just the labor for the eight and nine. That's not correct. So if you look at the top of it, it says the installation for two finished water pumps, and eight and nine were the materials for this work.
Right.
So we are going to rebid the materials, and... But this is the labor for installing those materials.
You're rewarding the labor, but we're rejecting the...
The actual parts.
Material bids. The material bids.
Correct. Yes. So we're going to put those, resolution eight and nine, out to formal bid.
Anything change in eight and nine that would change the numbers in seven?
Should not change anything.
Because that's just the labor.
That's just the labor.
But the way it's written, it's kind of written... Do we have that... Did they give us a tabulation on how many, like, man-hours that was or man-months? You know, that's a million and a half dollars. That's a lot of hours, I hope. That's just labor.
There's, along with that, there is equipment that they are installing, that they are providing.
In seven?
In seven, yes, sir.
Okay, let's get it right then. Come on.
But it's the well pump. But, but it's, it's the well pump. So we, we're drilling a well. We got a contractor on site right now drilling two wells, one out at the church site, uh, and then they're gonna piggyback and drill this. So the reason this was broken out the way it was, is we were trying to expedite everything. So, um, we, we put out RFPs for the pumps and RFPs for the piping.
Okay, so, so this is correct, then?
That is correct. Seven is correct.
All right. So it's not just labor. There is-
They're, yeah, they've gotta provide the, they're relocating, uh-
That makes more sense.
They're relocating, uh, aerator from water plant number three.
Man, that's the way I read it.
So there's-
I'm hearing different.
Yeah, I mean, it was a, a formal bid project with, I don't know, thirty sets of draw, thirty sheets and a set of drawings. I mean, it was, what, the, the goal was, is we're trying to expedite things to get more water. So, back before the end of the year, we decided, let's go ahead and get the pumps ordered and the piping ordered. But we had two dead, we had two deadlines. We were trying to get this done by May. We knew it was aggressive. Uh, found out the pumps were not gonna be here till the summer. We can't shut down that water plant in the summertime, so we, we, we moved that contract for Taylor Corporation. They're gonna begin in October.
Okay.
So we found out here recently, uh, policy change. We gotta advertise that job. We've got competitive pricing, but we have to advertise it in the paper. So we're gonna do that with the pumps and the piping. Gonna have it advertised, not this Friday, but next Friday. I mean, it's just a, a formality. Get it out there, bid, equipment, everything will be here before the, that contractor is ready to go in October. So, um, you know, that was, that's why those two items were coming off the agenda. That's why it's a little unorthodox of how we did this. Normally, you would, you guys would get the whole thing in one, but in a, but in an effort to expedite it, we pulled out the piping and these pumps, um.
Let me, let me just go back. Let me show you what Councilman Conyers has, has shown me, though. On the description of the item that they bid on, 1.34 million, there's a 10% contingency which comes to the 1.474 million. Furnish and install all labor, materials, equipment, and appurtenances, not pre-purchased by the city, for the water treatment plant number one improvements, phase one, including piping, valves, site work, electrical instrumentation, and other work required for a complete system.
Sounds like everything but the actual pump or whatever.
Yeah, so they do have to supply some piping as it relates to the well. Not quite sure how much water we're gonna get out of the ground. We've got a, we have a temporary, in that set of bid documents, there's a temporary way to get that, pump that water into the water treatment plant with a submersible, temporary submersible pump. They, obviously they have to do site work. They gotta dig, they gotta install the pipe. That's just kinda standard language. They gotta pour a pad for the new aerator relocation. There's some site work associated with that. They're providing a well pump. We don't know how big that well pump's gonna be, so we couldn't pre-purchase that. We got, we gotta do a well test to know how big we're gonna make that pump.
Right.
So that's common practice in, in how we do things.
Yeah, I, I, I got it. I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that we are bidding this correctly with the, with the way that this is written and what I'm hearing. I, I, you know, and I talked to the mayor earlier about this. I'm, I'm reading two different things here. I'm, I got a bid for just labor, but in that, I have materials and, and work and everything in this tabulation. And, and I, and I, when I read it the first time, it kind of, it, and I was talking to the mayor about this earlier, it, it threw me off the first time I read it. So I just wanna make sure that we're in good standing as far as how we're, how we're-
It's Title 39 project, and what, uh, the first part of it was for labor and apparently for some of the materials. So that was properly bid out. If it was labor and materials and it was bid out, correct. The other two portions of it are, they, they used an exemption out of Title 41, that the new law, there was some new law passed, it's late September, it's still not been codified, but they did not leave that Title 41 exemption in as a, as an option for purchase, uh, in a Title 39 project. They did leave a bunch of exemptions in that we can use, uh, buying groups, state lists, those types of things that we can go to and shop on, but, uh, for Title 39 projects, but they did not leave the needed, used, and consumed exemption that was listed on this for eight and nine. So that's kind of, those materials have gotta go back out for bid.
Well, I don't wanna speak for any of the other councilmen, because they may not be thinking the same thing I am, but for me, I mean, that one, four, or seven number, it almost makes me feel a little better to see this, because if that's just labor, like just paying for man-hours-
Right.
-without any other-
That's exclu, that's-
-anything else involved, that, that is just, sounds like just a ton of hours, and obviously it's a big project. It could take a lot of hours.
Absolutely.
And so to me, it almost makes me feel a little bit better to see that that includes, you know, piping, site work, electrical instruments, and, and all these other things, but that might not be where these gentlemen are at at all.
So, when y'all looking at the-
I'm sorry. So you're gonna go, Caleb?
So when you're looking at the proposal form, was where you're reading that, that's just a small, uh, blurb. I mean, when you look at the set of drawings, you've got electrical in that 1.4 million dollars. We've got, you know, we're putting in, we're going, we're putting in pumps that are twice the size as what they're, that's there. So you've got all new conductors, all new conduit duct banks. I mean, 1.4 million dollars for what it's worth was what we had estimated for this part, and, you know, we, fortunately, we, we had two bidders on that, you know, from a, it does, it is a lot. Everything's expensive right now. I'm not gonna lie. I mean, everything we're bidding right now is high. Uh, and I don't, that's just gonna be what-
Let's get back to, yeah, we, we understand it. So let me, not to cut you off, but, but so, I'm still confused. I, I, we're, eight and nine are wrapped up in seven, or are they not?
The, the contractor in item number seven is gonna install the equipment that we are purchasing.
Oh, that's labor. Hold on now. Eight and nine are for the procurement of the pumps and the-
That's the equipment. That's some of the equipment associated with it.
Then, then, once again, I'm still a little bit thrown by, on this proposal form, it says, including piping, valves, site work, electrical instrumentation, and other work required for a complete system. It says the word "complete" system. So how are we buying more equipment? I, I, that don't, the two don't add up to me.
Yeah. The way, the, kind of the problem is, the way, and I, once, I, I have to agree with Councilman Burrell, and I, and I, once again, I mentioned this earlier to the mayor, and I was kinda concerned it didn't match up. Um, it had, it, it, it seems that it's, it's kinda muddying, just to be frank, it seems like it's muddying the water a little bit, um, as far as what we're actually doing. And it shouldn't be that complicated, uh, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
And you're, you're reading what we wrote. I completely understand that.
Right.
So it, it's a, it's a snapshot of what those bid documents were. The, the bid documents were probably a two hundred, two hundred-
So these were your words, not their words. They weren't saying they're providing-
We put that proposal from there. Yes, sir. That is-
So you knew when they bid that that was-
That's right. And if you go in and you look at the drawings, there's like, you know, we, we show lines going to these pumps, and it's pre-purchased by the owner. Now, the things you don't see, like the things they're providing, I mean, we're having to put, you're putting these pumps on top of an el, an existing elevated slab that wasn't built to support them.
I saw the additional 25,000 for the slab, but that was, that was-
Yeah, so there's all the, there's all the stuff that goes along with it. They are providing materials. We could not, you know, we couldn't buy every nut and bolt. We couldn't buy the, the well pump for the reasons I, I just mentioned. We don't even, we, to this day, don't know how big it's gonna be. The bigger, the better.
Okay. We were also trying to do it because we were trying to expedite the project, but we also found out, trying to expedite it, and I think Councilman Burrell, you and I had talked about this, was there was a cost, there was gonna be some additional cost to expedite it.
That's right.
And so that's why we pushed it to October. But we also were trying to pull out that material to be able to save some money, so the contractor was not purchasing that as part of the whole bid package, and we could purchase it, and it would be more cost-effective for us.
Yeah, I just wish, yeah, if that had been, you know, somewhere in there that said, it's understood that the city's gonna furnish this and this, there wouldn't be that confusion.
That's why we were doing it.
Yeah, what, what, I, I totally agree. All I'm saying is that when you read this, even as I go and I read the declarations, when I read the declarations, this declaration is telling me that, it says here that, um, further, let me see, is where, the fact that description of the work, the quantity of the work, the materials included here is brief and is intended only to indicate the general nature of the work identified. So it's saying here that it's, it's, that we're doing work, we're purchasing material. Wish, let me find it again.
It feels like we're doing everything to build out the site, get everything prepped, ready, and then all you gotta do is come in and plug in the pump, and everything else is built out. Everything else is included in this.
So, yeah. So it says, yeah, so it says the fact that the descriptions, the work, it quantifies the work and materials included herein. So work and materials, but when, 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 when we, when we first spoke of it, it was saying just labor.
That's-
And that's where I'm, I'm, and it keeps saying work and materials in this agenda item here, and that's the part that I'm trying to-
We took out, right, and I understand why it's confusing. We took out part of those materials, the high-service pumps, those are the big pumps, this item, and then-
But not to interrupt, let me just clarify. But this 1.4 has nothing to do with materials, is what you're telling me?
There are materials in there. There are some materials.
It doesn't have anything to do with the materials in seven and eight.
It does have something, but it does have something to do with, hold on, timeout. Your order, hold on.
It doesn't have anything to do with the materials for seven. They got some plans-
Well, it does, because I'm seeing the variable, I'm seeing in eight, the variable frequency drivers, as I see in seven. That's what I'm saying. There's a redundancy here, and I'm asking for us to clarify the redundancy. Are we getting the variable in seven, or are we getting them in eight?
You're getting them, you're getting them installed in item number seven, and you're purchasing them in item number eight.
So, okay, all right.
That's right.
Basically, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so just the installation for those particular items is in our agenda item bid process, proposal of seven?
That's right. And, and item number seven includes getting a aerator from water plant number three, relocating it, pouring a foundation for it, reinforcing, installing it, a new well pump, well pump piping, um, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of material that they, they're providing. The two things they're not providing are the pumps and the variable frequency drives and the piping.
But the price to install those two items is in number seven.
Included in 1.4.
Okay.
It's, it's part of 1.4.
So basically, they're gonna provide all the labor, a portion of the materials and equipment-
That's right.
Is number seven.
Right.
And all of the labor to install eight.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
Okay. Okay.
That's right.
Yeah. It's just worded very ambiguous, the way that it's worded. And I, and I, and I told the mayor earlier, I said, oh, there's a couple of wordings in there that I was kinda like, it doesn't really make sense.
I mean, we were trying to get it, we were trying to expedite it as fast as we could, save some money, because contractor's gonna mark that up 15%. I don't know. I, I don't, I'm, I'm a design engineer, but they will mark up that, that stuff, and, you know. So the idea was, is trying to get this expedited as quickly, as best we could. And that's why it is unorthodox to do things like, to, especially to purchase pipe. Now, we purchase equipment ahead of time a lot, like pumps.
So is there a itemized hours or tabulation that shows the breakdown of these hours of labor that will equal up to the 1.3, leaving out the contingency and the 25K for the concrete slab?
No, sir, that's not, we, that wasn't required of the contractor. It's a lump sum project, like most of these projects, so that-
So how do they, just for educational purposes, how do they come up with that idea that it's gonna take that many hours to do this particular job?
They have, I mean, they just tabulate it. I mean, they have a, they, a contractor have a spreadsheet, and they look at everything out from, like I said, I'm not a general contractor, but they look at man-hours and material costs and, and risk.
Motivations.
Risk is another one, you know.
So they're adding, okay, so there's a couple of things-
I'm hoping this job right here, we're starting in October, the plant can be shut down, you know. We try to minimize that when we do our projects, but they are working around three wells. I mean, it's, you know.
Okay.
Generally speaking, in a lump sum price, through experience, if they've already done this work and other things, they know what the costs were, so that's how they obtain the price for their labor costs, their things. And then also with a lump sum, there are contingencies based in it, based on the fact that they did mess up something. They can't come back and get more money for a, like a cost-plus job.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I just-
A line item job, because in a line item job, if it takes more materials and more things, you get paid for that. But in lump sum, you're on the hook for everything that's there. So yes, there is a risk factor in the pricing of that.
And what, and what, kinda what you're saying, so in generalities in a water sewer world, a plant project, uh, where you're building structures is typically done on a, on a lump sum basis, and then when we're doing linear work, pipes and that sort of thing, it's done unit price.
Right.
Like what he was saying, if they say, hey, we got, you know, we had to install 50 more feet of pipe, you get, you pay for 50 more feet of pipe. I mean, there's a unit price agreement there. Now, a lot of times, it hasn't come back before council, but they have a-
It's a change order, I guess.
Right. But from something like this, if it's, you know, like you said, the material, if they find out, oh, we gotta install these pump drains, because, for example, this is, you know, well, then you knew that going in. We don't have a unit price for it. You bid the job, just like everybody else, you're gonna have to install that. Um, so, eh, but they're like, back to what you said, there's more, there's some risks there, they, you know. But that's just the common, common practice of how you bid.
By the way, there's really no real material.
Yeah, I got, Council President, I got one more question for them. So, let me ask you one more question. So if I go back to the proposal form, and you said it was understood that we were gonna buy some, this equipment that was originally in resolutions eight and nine?
That's right.
But it, it doesn't, this, although it says lump sum, and it says the words "complete system," it was understood that it was not gonna include those pieces of equipment, am I correct? Okay, so when they submitted this bid for this lump sum, the winning contractor, or with the low bid, Taylor Corporation, did the other bidder have the same knowledge that they didn't have to pay for that equipment?
Absolutely.
So they both knew it. So there, I don't have their, uh, proposal form, so the total price they would put in there would have been less those as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it, the, the, the proposal form snapshot, the, the plans and specifications are abundantly clear of who's supplying what and what they were responsible for.
So that's spelled out in the specs. That, that's very helpful there.
Yeah, they all get the same thing.
And I think some of the confusion is, we talked about this several months ago, and now it comes back, because we talked about the time delay and the cost savings, and now it's back, and it's just confusing.
I would suggest maybe in the future to, to prevent it, and it could, I don't, you know, lead to other issues, is that, in that, in that description of item, you might even wanna put something in there, you know, see specifications for, you know, complete details or something, because that would have pointed us to another document, which we could've said, oh, yeah, I see that doesn't include the pump.
In that proposal form you're looking at, that, that is, you know, pretty common language, but on a project like this, this is unorthodox. I mean, we would typically, under normal conditions, a contractor would supply the pumps and the piping, it would all be under. You would have, you would have item number seven and nothing else.
So we'd probably go out and state bid and get that for them, or furnish them or something to save money or something like that, maybe?
I don't-
No, we have to bid it.
Oh, the equipment, eight and nine?
Yes, sir. We have to bid it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll have to advertise and bid that. That's what we learned today, and that's what we're working towards, is to get that equipment purchased and advertised.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I, I get it. I, I just wanna make sure that the public is clear on what we're doing, and, and that, you know, eh, eh, there's some type of elementary understanding of, of how we're going through this process.
Yeah.
And Council President, just to, so you know, we're trying to work through this new, new format of the agenda. So if y'all will flip to number nine of the agenda, you'll see at the bottom, I kind of went back and said, okay, it doesn't make sense to me talking about the available budget. So at the very bottom, we put new well and upgraded treatment plant one, what the budget was, so y'all would understand.
That was my question, was gonna be about, how did, how did these three items collectively stack up to that budget?
So you'll see what that budget was, because we thought that was the last item of this project, or not the very last item, but at least part of this last item. So we're trying to work through this new agenda format also, to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make good decisions. So as you're looking through this, if there's something that we can do better from an administrative standpoint, you know, don't hesitate to let us know that.
All right, counsel, does everybody have any more questions or a clear understanding of what we're proposing in this awarded bid, and what the work is, and what Krebs is doing? Is everybody okay with it?
Hi, him.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Caleb.
All right. All right, guys. Eight and nine, we're not gonna do ten.
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, so number 10 was to, uh, amend the resolution 4950-23 to allow sewer service to four or less units outside city limits.
Yes, very good. Um, did we wanna, wanna-
Talk about that?
Yeah, a little bit, just to let-
So when we presented this original, um, resolution to the council, um, we had the language in there to allow it for four, four or fewer units, um, to be able to hook on the city sewer outside the city limits. We made a change to that in the council meeting, and, and since then, there's been some single-family, single-family homes that already have had, like, maybe a sewer line runs, runs right in front of the property, or, um, we have septic to sewer, when there's a septic tank there, and somebody wants to build, specifically a lot of the times, this happens, like on County Road One, um, they will not permit the septic tank again, so they have to convert to sewer, and right now, the ordinance, the way it's in place prohibits us from doing that. So we asked the council to- So, we asked the council to reconsider and make an amendment to that original resolution.
And the ordinance that we're speaking of is the certificate of service.
An availability letter.
An availability letter, certificate of service that we kind of held until we find further research on what our resources can.
That's right.
Can deal with as far as aburting on our system, is what the mayor is speaking on. Okay.
Yeah. Council President, may I ask a question? So, Errol, and I, I spoke to the mayor about this previously, I, I had a call from a builder a week or two ago that said they couldn't get issued a permit to provide service to a home they were building in an existing subdivision. Now, this subdivision doesn't have four or fewer homes, it has many more than that, but, but it was, you know, the development of this subdivision started years ago, and so they're just filling in some empty lots. And I thought that we were going to modify this ordinance to be able to go back and allow them to be permitted to provide water and sewer to these homes. I mean, you, you can't have a subdivision with 95 homes, and I'm making that number up, and then the last five in can't get water and sewer. I mean, so.
It says, or a single family residence. So, that would be a single family residence.
It says, or a, or a single family home. I didn't know that it could be, should you say within an existing subdivision then?
So, a sub, a new subdivision would be, a subdivision with four or fewer lots or a single family home, and right now, they're just trying to permit that as a single family home. They're not trying to permit a whole subdivision.
In my opinion, this reads us.
I want to make sure I didn't, I didn't read it that way the first time. I just thought if somebody's going out and decides to build one house or four or few.
That's, that's correct.
So, I think we did this, Councilmember Errol, for this situation.
I was making sure that it covers it.
Yes, sir.
It'll cover it.
It'll cover it.
Because it says service to, may provide four or fewer single lots or a single family home. Well, then, if they get them piecemeal, what if there's a subdivision that's not in the city limits that has 200 lots and they just come to get the first home? They're just, that's a single family residence.
Well, they'd have to have an availability letter for that whole subdivision. And we wouldn't issue them if they were outside the city limits.
The whole project would have to get.
Yeah.
A service of availability, a certificate of availability.
See, that's up, that existing subdivision already has a letter of availability.
Okay, I'm just, does that need to be stated in here, though? If the subdivision already has a letter of availability? I kind of think that, I, I'm sorry, when I read this, it doesn't, it doesn't cover it. I, I feel like there's another sentence.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust the verbiage to make it more clear.
Right. So, I would feel better if we did that.
Okay.
Or, or you could say to a subdivision with four or fewer lots or a single family home outside the corporate limits. Now, that single family home doesn't necessarily have to be in a subdivision with a certificate. But I would add that somehow, with four or few lots or a single family home outside the, or a, you say, or a single family home within a subdivision that currently has a certificate of availability, is that what it is?
It seems like the single family catches them all.
Now, now, what you don't want to have, as I, that, like Bob, what you don't want to have is someone that has 10 homes and every month, they're doing one single family home to complete 10 or 12 homes.
No, so when they come to a utility review meeting, we're going to review their plans. So, you know, they've got to get us approval from us before we even issue an availability letter. They have to get approval from us, so we want, we can see what they're doing, what they're building, when they're building it, and if it's got five or more, we're, we're going to, and they're outside city limits, we're going to say, we can't issue, issue you an availability letter at this time. We're totally upfront with them during these utility reviews.
Yeah, well, what would stop them from piecemealing it? What would stop them from saying, okay, I'm going to do one this month, that's done, and now, but I'm just going to present this one that I'm doing, but the next one, I'm going to come back, I'm going to do another one, and then that's done. I'm, I'm just hypothetically.
Another way to say that, Council President, is what if they say they're going to do five at a time in, in this subdivision, it already has it? That builder's doing, they say they're going to build, they're going to start construction on five homes in that subdivision.
Well, five homes is over the limit.
That's over, four is the limit.
Yeah, but it's already been issued a certificate of availability.
Well, then.
Then they got to provide it.
But I have not issued an availability le, letter for those homes since.
I'm talking in existing, yeah.
So, if, if we've already committed to it, then we have to do it.
Yeah.
If that subdivision has a certificate of availability and they, builder commits to saying, we're going to go in there and buy every vacant lot in this subdivision, we're going to build a house on every one of them.
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, if they, if they have, if they have an availability letter, that, I mean, they have, they're already committed. We can't, we can't go back.
So, but in that availability letter, would they have already committed to these future lots?
Yes.
Okay, that's the.
Yes, we would have already committed that.
I wish you said it.
But, oh, and we can change, I mean, we can.
So, you want to add a sentence that just says, or a single family lot in a subdivision that currently has an availability letter?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, I'm just going to be clear, in this situation here, if, if they already have an availability and they have 20 houses that they're about to say they're about to construct, we're saying that we're going to provide opportunity for that to happen in this situation.
We, we have to, because, because we've already issued an availability letter.
I'm just, okay.
I know, that's what I'm saying, is to make it clear. You can't pick and choose in a subdivision what lots are developed and not, if you've, you know, you've already granted it to the whole subdivision.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just making sure that I understand.
There's a difference between developing the lot and building the house.
Well, what I'm speaking of is building the house.
When you come before the plan review, the entire subdivision, A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, 4, everyone do it, has to be proposed and on the plan, and before that happens, that entire 1, 2, 3, 4, A, B, C, D, has to be issued a availability letter prior to any of this even starting. So, the fact, mere fact that they've got all this, they want to start a section and do two lots, it's going to cost them a pile of money, but in essence, you know, they're allowed to do that because they already have the availability letter. Or, they didn't get an availability letter, they can't do it at all.
Yeah, I get that, yes, sir. I just want to make sure that we're understanding. Go ahead, Hunter, please.
And Councilman Brune's right there. The availability letters, and why I spoke up, because the planning commissions for subdivisions happening is what usually requires the availability letter from any utility. So, while we're part of the same City of Fairhope family, we operate in different segments, they review, give availability letter, they have to supply that with their application for a subdivision. That is a little slightly different, but the same at Baldwin County Planning Department as well, and potentially even Daphne or Civil Hill if you're in those territories. So, this says, we'll not issue a new availability. All of those have either already had the availability letter, and if they're building homes, they're already approved. They've been final plated, it's done, signed, sealed, delivered. So, coming in to build a single family home doesn't require that availability letter. So, that's permit, move forward. There's stub outs, there are all the infrastructures in place.
Well, what we've done before allowed them now, maybe I misunderstood you, Hunter, but, you know, there's been people have been denied that are going into an existing subdivision where it's been approved.
And, and speaking of the last minute, I think the way it was proposed and all the language was vetted, it got tweaked a little bit where we were all, all of a sudden saying, well, we got to do for one, we got to do for all, so nobody gets an availability letter. And that's really not what we're doing with single family homes that already has the infrastructure and has been vetted through that process.
Well, they, if they, if they already have an availability, they wouldn't need an availability letter. That's the bottom line. So, I, that's the part that I think we're getting kind of, you know, if you already have an availability letter, these, these properties have been platted, approved, futuristic or otherwise, then they don't have to come back.
There, there's some specifics on the language. We may have given an availability letter two years ago, approval of a preliminary plat, but then that expires.
So, they do expire.
So, they would have to come and get, in some, that, that's anomaly, but in some situations, so they would have to come back, get a new letter. This would prevent that from happening. So, we will not issue a new letter for those. But anything that's already vetted, been done, remember the, the preliminary and final plat processes? We have some divi, some subdivisions, there was one on Highway Three, I can't remember which councilman was on there, but it's Fairhope Downs. It got approval. It sat for two years and they didn't act upon it, didn't build, the land sold to somebody else. That expires at the end of that two years. That availability letter is no more. So, if somebody wanted to pick that subdivision up again and get started, they would have to renew the whole process, get a new availability letter to submit with their planning application, and start the whole process over. They would not be able to get that applica, that, uh, under this guidelines. So, that, that's where we're.
And, and we've recent, recently revamped our avail, the structure of our availability letters. I've worked with the mayor and, and Mr. Williams, and we've come up with a new format to, to, to put timelines and expiration dates on it. So, it's not just an open-ended availability there that goes out.
That's what I'm asking. Okay. So, that's the part that I'm talking about.
So, yes, we have, we have changed the structure of the letter.
Because otherwise, I, I could just, oh, you know, I already have availability, I want to put 40 houses right now, let me do my 40 houses, I'm just going to burden the system with 40 new houses.
Right. So, and that's, that's why we implemented that.
Right.
New structure in the availability letter.
Okay.
But, but others that have that availability letter.
It, to be honest, I mean, it doesn't, the availability letter, I mean, when we, when y'all amended the, the resolution to begin with, it said subdivisions with four, four or few, four or fewer lots or single family homes outside the corporate limits. So, that did away, I mean, y'all wanted to make it even across the board for everybody. So, you could not issue, you could not hook anybody to sewer, no matter where they were building. Or what they were building. Nobody could hook in. That's why we're coming back to you and asking you to amend that.
Without any exception.
With that, yeah, with that right. But we're asking you to amend that.
Is there a, I'm getting extreme here, but I like to look at the what ifs. Is there a situation where somebody could be in the county that's contiguous and they just, you know, there's a street that's ripe for development and somebody just starts building, there's not a subdivision, and they just start building homes side by side all the way down the street?
Like a family development.
Well, the, the family exemptions are the anomaly that we can't control.
That's a family development.
Yeah, the family exemptions have long been a sore spot of, they're exempt by county and county does, you know, has very limited.
That's what you're talking about, family.
And don't require availability.
If you have a family subdivision, somebody just decides to buy a piece of land and they, they just keep, keep partialing it out, keep partialing it out, make some.
There's one in Magnolia Springs. I mean, there's, when you go to Magnolia Springs, you'll see like one row and they've just come in and they've built like 10 houses, they all kind of look alike and they're all in a row and they're just single family houses. It's not a subdivision.
That's kind of what I'm talking about.
They've just bought single lots.
This won't, this would, that would be allowed here, right?
It would be, um, yeah.
That's what I was asking. Like, how do you, so, that's exactly what I was asking. Like, so what would stop me from just piecemealing?
Well, there, there's some guidelines on the family exemptions. So, there's also in both of the planning.
Well, forget family, what would stop me from piecemealing, like we just said, and do 20 hot piecemeal, one, come back, another, come back, but I'm still putting a burden on the system because I'm going past the four homes and I'm just piecemealing.
Re, reality.
It might not be feasible financially, but.
Well, I think the time constraints, we're not talking about an ordinance here that's in place for eternity. This is why we do our study.
Okay.
To get one phase approved and do a planning commission, either ours or the counties, is going to take a couple of, you know, it's going to take some time, months to do. So, stacking those up is probably not worthwhile.
So, well, this is a resolution, are we going to have to repeal this at a certain time? Is there, is there a sunset on it?
Well, when we ta, we talked about, when we put the first resolution in place on December 11th, we talked about, about a six-month window. So, that's kind of where, that's kind of where we are.
So, we need to make sure we put a sunset clause in this, if that's the case. Otherwise, what you're saying, Hunter, this is done, like, once we.
Well, we would, we, we plan on coming back to you.
Come back and redo it.
Yeah, we plan on coming back.
When this, I mean, and I think that this is kind of outside, I think that the conversation, if I remember right, we didn't know how long the study was going to take exactly, but.
Right.
We're debating 90 days or six months, hoping more to the 90 days, but.
Yeah, we can undo it, but, yeah, okay.
And, and there is another check here, so, even if it's four or more lots, I, I mean, there's some, usually a minor can turn into a major subdivision. So, if infrastructure has to be put in, so there's more of a little checking balance.
It's going to cost, right, it's going to cost, for sure.
Uh, to, to be able to evaluate these during the utility review.
Right. And that's the point, right. It may not be feasible for someone to, to do such a thing because it's going, like Boni said, they're going to, they're going to pay out the wahoo. So, all right, thank you. 11, let's see.
So, number 11 is the city council approved selection by the mayor for professional engineering services for a new 16-inch force main along Highway 1, 181, along with two master lift, lift stations.
This is just to select the engineer.
This is just the engineer?
It is, just to select the engineer.
Okay, got you. Very good. All right. Any questions, Council? It's pretty straightforward. All right, Darren, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to speak to items 12 and 17 and give support to 13, 14, and 15. Item 12 is a request to award the bid for the resurfacing and repair of County Road 13 from Morphe to the south-southern limits to John G. Walton. I do want to point out a couple of things. One, I want to applaud Aaron and Rhonda, and they're stepping up to marketing. We had five responsive bidders. You look at bidder number one and two, both are companies that own their own asphalt plant and they were 2% separation between their prices. So, that usually tells you you're, you're getting a pretty competitive bid when separation between number one and two is 2% of the total contract. Originally, when we put, we put into the budget this year, two, two very specific requests for resurfacing, one was County Road 13, this segment, as well as downtown Section Street, and then our general resurfacing. And we had $350,000 budgeted for this, we're over that by a little over $58,000. What we're going to do is transfer just general resurfacing there, because the good news is with the 65% plan review on Section Street, the engineer's estimate is about $500,000, and we have 750 budgeted. So, we think we're going to come in under on our Section Street and that's going to be available for, for resurfacing and hopefully to make up this. I will tell you what probably was the biggest driver in this during the time of design and then during the pre-bid process, getting out there and really looking at the north section of County Road 13 that runs between Twin Beach and Morphe. If you ever go out there, the, there's some compounding crowning of that road. I think that probably when it was Oberg Road and it was a little narrower and they widened it, you got some breaks. And we made a decision for a quality, to try to get better quality, is we did an addendum to include full width milling on that section, and that was a little bit driver on the price going up, but I think we'll get a better road product afterwards. Then on item number 17, unfortunately, this is one of those things that requires a $5,000 explanation for a $2,000 change order. As you know, on our founders' track and field, we took the option to pay the geotech directly to save any upcharge being routed through the C E and I engineer. So we had to pick a number of what we thought that service was gonna cost. We asked for not to exceed of $8,000. But understand, the geotech's job is, is that every time there is a certain activity on site where they're placing concrete, or asphalt, or preparing soil to receive concrete, there has to be testing. So they charge us per the agreed-upon price, and at the end of the day, the total for testing came in at $10,145. So in order to settle the expense of that services, we're requesting a change order of that $2,145. And that's the explanation, it's not like it was something was necessarily unexpected, we just made a bad guess at what the not to exceed needed to be going into that. And then, of course, I absolutely support 13, which we've talked about, and I gotta applaud Nicole Love, she has worked so hard, and she has been meeting after meeting online and otherwise with Aldot, and even though we love our friends at Aldot, it's like herding cats, and she has been a wonderful herder on this, so support that. And then this position number 14 does report to me as a permit tech and draft person, and unfortunately, the person that held this position before was classified as a GIS tech, but he was not a GIS tech. So this, the good news is we better define what this role is, and it's cost-saving to the budget because the grade goes down to grade levels. So it's actually better than budget neutral, it's a little budget saving. And then on number 15, I'll just make this comment, probably my greatest failure as public works director in my tenure was, we have been trying to get cabinetry at this fire station. I think this is the third year it's been carried forward in the budget. And I know that's a big ugly number, but if you would know the iterations we've been to, and I think there's probably a chief and assistant chief nodding their head back there, is we have tried so hard, even through contracts with Lowe's, Home Depot, and trying to get laminated custom cabinetry has been a near impossible task, and I failed at that task. George finally got somebody to quote us a price that would get it done, plus the flooring and the sinks and all that. So if, you know, and John Saracena, who's over fire maintenance, says that he just, his dream is that there will be cabinets there before his retirement date comes. So if you'll please consider that, and they have done all of the acrobatics to find the budget to make it happen, but that is my failure, and if you need, feel the need to yell at somebody, I'm here to take that because I didn't get it done in my tenure. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, guys.
Billy, this is a repeat from last time, I second everything Richard just said. Number 15, obviously, if y'all have any questions, I'm here for you. If not, obviously.
Just getting cabinets done, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, then. I do have a question though, that I have to ask, as far as the track, you know, we have the dedication. Either George or Richard, the, to make it certified, that part that I was real adamant about, as far as if a child breaks a record, or is able to hold that record?
I can actually answer that. So they will not come down and just certify the track, they only sanction events. But I have reached out to Tim Carter and asked him to maybe use some of his resources at the Alabama High School Athletic Association, just have them come down and look at it. But they sanction and certify events specific, they don't certify the track. But I have asked.
So what I'm saying is, so this is where the deal, so if we ever hold an event.
They come down, they certify that event.
Okay, so my question is this, when they come down and to certify that track, have we measured it on their standards to make sure that our track will pass as certified? That was my, I don't care when, but that was, that's the ultimate goal.
And that is why I've reached out and asked Tim Carter to reach out to the Alabama High School Athletic Association and bring somebody down from there just to walk through it, look at it, give us any feedback. They have not done that as of yet, because when we called them, they said they would not come do that unless we had an event that they would come and certify and sanction. So that's why I've reached out to him and said, can you, can you reach out to somebody there and see if they will just come down?
So the company that, Halus.
Halus.
Halus, that does it.
Right.
They will let you know if the track is certifiable. And that was the part that I was speaking of, when we didn't get Halus to actually do it, because I talked to the rep myself.
I'll call Halus and have them, but they have been here, Halus has already, they've been on site. So I'll have them come back on site.
They did the surfacing.
They did the surfacing.
But the people that did the site work told you that they would make.
They guaranteed me that they would get somebody to make sure that those.
And he has been in touch with me.
Told you about that podium.
Yes.
No doubt.
And that's Jay, and he has been in touch with me, and he has been in touch with the Alabama High School Athletic Association. But I'll call, I'll follow up myself.
But what I'm saying is, all Jay has to do is call Halus, who does tracks.
Yes, they were there, they were on site.
And they certify the tracks as well.
They do.
And say, hey, could y'all come down and make sure that we're certified, like that our numbers are where they're supposed to be when they come, yeah, okay.
I'll have them, I'll call them myself.
Very good, thank you.
Especially when you have those masters events out there.
With the masters events, right, you want the kids to get credit anyway.
And the masters.
All right, what you got George? That's it buddy?
The 15 was all of us.
Okay, God bless you buddy.
They have questions.
All right. Jeff, I guess, yep.
Yes, I've got number 16. Want to bring an internet connection to our facility at 555 South Section Street. How it gets internet right now, it uses the fiber that goes from 555 South Section all the way here to City Hall. And a couple of things kind of brought this on, we've had a couple of fiber cuts in the past, and when we do, that building is just kind of dead in the water. And plus, we've had construction outside my window, and I've just been praying that they won't cut the fiber, but they've done a really good job, Manhattan cut it. But why this is so important to me is that we've got a radio tower at that location, and dispatch here has to communicate with that tower, and there's no backup for that. If the fiber gets cut and they lose contact with, or they lose the ability to use their dispatch consoles to use that radio tower to get to the police officers. And by having a secondary route for that traffic, I think is very important.
Okay.
And what I'm gonna, I'm not gonna just have this connection idly sitting by either, I want to use it for the Haven, for them to have internet access, for the Cymbal Clinic, and I'm gonna run our voice traffic from the warehouse out this connection as well, just to get some use out of it. So I think it's gonna be quite beneficial for us.
Was this budgeted, Jeff?
It was budgeted, yes sir.
It was budgeted for one year, but this is a three-year amount equal pretty much to the one-year amount.
Right, so I'll just have to put it in, if it's approved, then I will put it in the budget for each year. And I got several quotes, so community fiber, and they were, they were more expensive, so C-Spar came in and had a pretty good price.
And they have the bandwidth to cover all those services you're talking about?
They do.
And do we have to vet this through our guy? Okay, what's, Greg, yeah, okay. All right, God bless, thank you sir.
All right, thank you.
17 has been done. Let's see, 18, oh, 18, yeah. All right, is Bobby, is Mr. Hall here?
Council president and council. Our negotiation for a bid for Yamaha golf carts is in place, and we've got that figure straight now at 523,250, and that is for the purchase price of lithium battery golf carts, which I think is a plus. There's great value in that battery system, and it's labor-saving, and just here to answer any questions you may have.
That warranty again, for the council members that may not have known, been involved as much as Cory and I was, how many, what's the warranty, seven-year on that?
It's a four-year standard limited vehicle warranty with two USB connections in there, that's on the body of the golf cart. It is an eight-year battery life estimated on a cart going six miles a day. The lithium battery on just one day's charge will go 38 miles. The lithium battery doesn't have to be filled with water, it's labor-saving, it's also about 500 to 600 pounds lighter, so it'll be less compaction on the turf at the golf course. It does have a lot of value in that, it's a less charge, it takes about anywhere from six to eight hours to charge a water-filled, lead-filled battery, and these just take an hour. So we're gonna have some savings, yes, the lithium battery is more expensive, but there'll be savings on the backside of it.
Of our batteries, acid batteries, yep. Okay, yeah, I was pleased, I mean, you know, we kind of walked this number down a little bit, so we got some savings, which is always good. And we're just now about to redo our pathways and the weight on the pathways, and all that kind of comes in play with making this decision as well.
Yes.
And as much as we've had with our greens, we want to try to keep those as pristine as possible, so the weight has a lot to do that. My point is, all that cost, and so with this decision, I think it's a good investment on the back end. Any questions council?
I think the battery warranty alone warrants the additional price, it was a little bit more expensive, but the resale value of these, even after four or five years, you know, superior to what the resale of the wet sale battery is, because everybody knows they gotta replace all the batteries as soon as they buy it. Not so with the lithium.
Yep.
My only question, I can't remember, is this the replacement of the leased vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Because the other, the prior purchase, we actually sold all those on government.
We sold them, and we sold them pretty well.
More than we ever thought we'd get from them.
Yeah, I remember. So we wanted to buy moving forward, continue buying, not leasing.
Right, because of what we learned on those sales and how well they sell, that was another dynamic to our decision-making variable piece, so.
Also like to state that Yamaha has a repairman in the area, will still come under that, is needed, under the general warranty. He's been there at least twice to three times a month. We've had some other issues with a few carts, but they've serviced us pretty well, I'm happy with that. So that's another thing they'll have behind it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you brother Hall.
Thank you.
All right, we got seven minutes guys, let's get it done.
Good evening. I want to, I want to be able to update y'all on, that we submitted last week was an RFP for 25 million to the banks, to the local banks. And I think maybe y'all got a copy of it, but just want to give updates on some timelines. Those bids from the banks will be due back March 4th at 2:00 PM, and we'll have about a day to go through them, and then we want to be able to have it approved on March 11th on the winning bank. And then the plan would be that April 8th, a meeting that we would have a ordinance to issue this debt, and then on around April 11th would be a closing date. So just to keep your heads up on.
This is not an agenda item.
No, this is not, this is just for me to give you an update on what the timeline is and these coming through, and so we really hope some, we've had some questions from banks, so they're looking at it, they're looking at it. For agendas, I do have.
Hold on while we're on this.
3/11 date.
So that gives us only one week to make up, make our minds up on a $25 million decision. Did the banks have the option to like team together? Because, you know, some of the local banks, the regional banks, who would probably give us the best rates, they're, it's gonna be hard for them to loan 25 million, but if they team together, you know, I've talked to some of these banks.
Yeah, I mean.
And you know, it would make them more competitive.
That's the reason they're giving a longer period for them to be able to put the RFP together, that's the reason it's.
Not until March 4th, right?
Yes, yeah, they have until March 4th to be able to put that, put their bids together.
Sure doesn't give us much time to study that though.
Well, I mean.
Looks like we're not gonna be here March 11th.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we'll have to, it'll give us two weeks. Okay, yeah, okay. So which number do you have?
We have uniforms, so we had, did formal bids out on our uniforms, so number 19 and 20 are, 19 is for the flame retardant uniforms, and that is number 19, and then number 20 is for the regular uniforms. Y'all have any questions on those?
Yeah, well, we had, you know, I'm gonna bring, so the PFAS was an issue that came up in the public, as far as the retardation with the chemicals for our water, blah, blah, blah. Are we, are we on top of that as far as environmentally is with these uniforms, or does that affect us in any form or fashion that you know of?
Is Ben here? Ben's gonna know about those uniforms, that, I mean, this for safety, they have to wear them.
Right, so this, regardless, there's no alternate for these guys to be safety wise.
It's for safety purposes, you have to wear them, and I know Ben did a little bit of research today, I copied him on a reply back to the person who sent that email, I mean, PFAS is found in all kinds of materials, plastics, and it's just, I mean, it's something that required to use for safety.
And we don't have an alternate right now.
We do not.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
Okay, any other questions?
No ma'am.
Did we look for an alternate? I mean, we say we don't have one, but I don't know that, I don't know that we got that answer in two hours.
The question is, do they make an alternate?
Yeah, exactly. I know, it just hadn't been a whole lot of time to do that research, so.
Right.
I called a couple manufacturers, and right now they don't offer anything. David, I talked to the assistant chief, fire chief, and they said right now, the fire department, they're offering the outer shell, but nothing on the inner shells, so it's, the technology's not there yet.
Not there yet. How do you dispose of the old ones? I mean, that's really what, I mean.
We hadn't, well, Sentos took care of the last ones.
We returned them.
We returned them to the company, the bottom firm, okay.
These actually be ours, so.
All right.
Yeah, and they only have so many washes anyway.
About 52 washes.
52 washes.
Depends on what fabric you get, but most of them's 52, and you can't use fabric softener, so it's a.
Yeah, so we're on top of.
I did a five-minute little search.
How to wash them without?
If you look at everything, they're seeing non-stick cooking utensils, paint jackets.
Yeah, we understand, we just wanted to make sure that we do everything we can to not.
I did, I called, right now, this.
Okay, thank you brother, I appreciate you. All right, all right. 21. Building construction quote, Public Library, second floor. Is that you, is that, that's just you mayor with the, we had to rebid the second floor of the library, that's just simple. Congress, Jimmy, you want to kind of, it's just, we had to go back and rebid that through a GC, I believe.
Yeah, basically, just some of the wording and the way the bid was put out, it was cleaner for the city to actually bid it since city-owned building, and that was basically done just to clean up. It's still the same company that won the, won the first bid, won this bid as well, and they've got a great reputation, Wutherington Construction, and they do a lot of government-related projects.
Very good, very good.
One thing to note on that too, is the $812,000, $350,000 of that is city dollars, and the rest of it has been raised by the friends of the library.
Okay, all right, and the reappointment to the library board, Jimmy, you okay with that?
Yes, and I was, see the library here, I was asking them how their meeting went, but yes, good with the reappointment.
It's Dan Stankowski.
Yep, longtime member of the library board.
Former sketchy right there.
Oh, I didn't see you, sorry. Is he here?
He's in the back, he's in the very back.
Oh, he's hiding, okay, I see you dad, yeah.
Background check on him.
Yeah, we need to, we need to vet that guy. All right, very good. 23 guys, it's chief, we have a problem, all is well with this application? Okay, all right, all right, okay guys, we got a minute to spare.
Just take a three-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break, we'll take a five-minute break, see you back.